Good evening and welcome. I am Paul Alpert, the Chair of the Needham Planning Board. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Planning Board. It is January 18th, 2022 at about 7:19 PM. This open meeting of the Needham Planning Board is being conducted remotely, consistent with current state regulations and is being recorded. Public access to this meeting does not ensure that there will be public participation unless required by law. This meeting will not have public comment except in connection with any hearing that is on the agenda. We have two hearings on the agenda this evening. We have a hearing scheduled for 7:20 PM with regard to an amendment to the site plan special permit for the for the Chestnut Street parking lot. And then at 7:30, we have a public hearing with regard to the application for an amendment to a site plan special permit for Hearth Pizzeria with regard to outdoor seating. Okay. First, we'll confirm that we have a quorum of the members of the Planning Board present. When I call your name, please respond that you are present. Marty Jacobs.
Here, present.
Adam Block.
Present.
Jean McKnight.
Present.
Natasha Spata.
Present.
We have everyone here. And next, our town employees. We have Lee Newman, our Director of Planning and Community Development.
Present.
And Alex Glee, our Assistant Plan, our Assistant Town Planner.
Present.
Thank you. As each agenda item is reached, I will introduce participants who are here to present or discuss projects and proposals. Or if I'm not sharing, because we do have something where I will be recusing myself. Adam Block, who will be chairing that meeting, will introduce the participants. For those participating in the meeting, please also be aware that others may be able to see you and hear you. Anything that you share or state will be a matter of public record. All supporting materials for this meeting, including the agenda, are available on the town's website, www needhamma.gov, unless otherwise noted. The ground rules for this meeting are designed to allow for an accurate public record. Each of the speakers on our agenda will be introduced. After speakers conclude their remarks, each board member will be asked by name for any comment, questions, or motions. All votes will be by roll call. For each participant, please remember to state your name for the record before speaking. And for each person from the public who was recognized to speak, please remember to state your name and address for the record before speaking. That concludes our introductory remarks. It is after 7:20. So let's dive right into the first public hearing. This is an amendment, an application for an amendment to a major project site plan special permit, number 98-6. The town of Needham is the petitioner with regard to the property located at the existing municipal parking lot on Chestnut Street and Lincoln Streets, Needham, Massachusetts. And presenting tonight, I believe, is just Town Council Chris Heath. Chris, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and hello, board members. Good to see everyone. So I'm here tonight to talk, I think, relatively briefly about this requested amendment. And the requested amendment is to the site plan special permit for the Chestnut and Lincoln Street parking lot, which the Planning Board first approved in 1998. And that site plan special permit has undergone several revisions in the years since then. This requested amendment concerns seasonal outdoor seating by restaurants that neighbor the parking lot. And I understand that you either have or will soon have, I think, applications for seasonal outdoor seating from the restaurants themselves. And I think, in fact, you're, you're, you have one before you later on this evening. So the reason for this application is that our, that is, the town's site plan special permit covers the entire parking lot. And it does not contemplate or allow seasonal outdoor seating by the restaurants that, that neighbor it. So to the extent that these restaurants are going to come in and seek your permission to engage in seasonal outdoor seating, we thought it would be necessary to amend the permit to specifically allow room for, or authorization for restaurants to conduct seasonal outdoor seating on a portion of the parking lot. Now, I think there's at least, I think, two important points to make about that. As things currently stand, I don't believe we're anticipating or contemplating any actual loss of parking spaces. I believe the area that will be used, I think, will be used for seasonal outdoor seating is not, not occupied by any actual in-use parking spaces presently. For example, I think Hearth is applying for seasonal outdoor seating in an area that has been used as such for the past year or two during COVID. And two, the second important point, I think, is that we are not actually applying for any actual seasonal outdoor seating. We're just looking for room in our permit, which covers the whole lot, for others to come in and seek that permission. And I think it's really the responsibility of the restaurants themselves. If they're going to seek permission to do this, to file their applications, which I assume the Planning Board will review as they come in and decide on their own merits. So we're just looking for, again, some, some room within the existing permit that covers the entire lot for restaurants to come in and seek this permission from the board on a individual restaurant by restaurant basis. And I think that is all of my comments on the request, but I'm certainly happy to answer any questions that the board members may have.
Okay. Before we get to questions, Marty, just please give me a minute. We do have some communications. First, we have a communication from Dennis Condon, the our fire chief. The fire department is okay with allowing the seasonal usage, provided that the safety elements equal to or superior than those used on a temporary basis due to COVID are continued to be utilized. Then we have an email from Tara Gurge, who, who was the Assistant Public Health Director to the town of Needham. And she writes, "The Public Health Division conducted the review for a proposed amendment to the existing special permit for the municipal parking lot on Chestnut Street Lot, Ray Outdoor Dining, and we have no comments to share at this time." And lastly, with regard to this, we have a letter from Thomas Ryder, our Acting Town Engineer, who writes that the engineering department has no comment or objection to the proposed amendment. I would just like to make clear for the record my understanding of what we're doing here with this application. It's my understanding right now that Hearth Pizzeria is, as was expressed by Mr. Heap, using a space that they're currently using for outdoor seating, pre-COVID, that was, those were parking spaces. However, they are not actually on the town lot property. They're on the private property of whoever owns that, that space, Hearth Pizza's landlord. And I believe the town has an easement with regard to the parking spaces. And Masala Art, similarly, is occupying space that, pre-COVID, were parking spaces purely for Masala Art, because it was privately held space. I also believe that since this is a municipal parking lot, the Planning Board would have jurisdiction from Masala Art and Masala Art, excuse me for my Boston accent, and Hearth Pizzeria. But for the municipal lot itself, if there were, if there were other restaurants that were to move into other buildings that abutted the parking lot, I believe it would be the Select Board that would have jurisdiction to grant permission to use that area. So it does cover the entire lot. It is, it is possible that in the future, restaurants would go into space that is currently not occupied by restaurants. And so they might be seeking outdoor seating in, in the parking lot, but there's none right now. Those are, those are my comments. I don't have any questions. Marty, did you have some, something you'd like to say or some questions?
Yeah, I'm given what Attorney Heap has said. Do I understand, Chris, that you would, on behalf of the town, would not have an objection? Should we insert into a decision that there be no new loss of parking spaces?
No, I don't think I would have a problem with that at all.
Correct. Thank you.
Can I ask for a clarification on that? Isn't the outdoor seating going to be located on top of parking spaces? So won't they be lost to, to the extent that the outdoor seating is on top of those spaces?
That's... So I guess... Thank you for that, thank you for that comment, Lee. Marty, I guess, one question that I would have is the, the area currently being used by Hearth hasn't, as I understand it, hasn't been used as parking for this, during COVID. But I think there were some spaces shown on the plan that existed prior to restaurants first beginning to, to, you know, look for space to do outdoor dining. So I guess, I, I guess, I am ending my first response to your, to your question. I guess we want to maybe build in a little bit of flexibility here, to the extent that restaurants may want to use some existing spaces. But the other thing I'd add is that each individual restaurant is going to need to apply to the board for whatever outdoor seating it's going to engage in. So you're going to have the opportunity to look at that on a restaurant by restaurant basis as they, as they apply for this relief.
Lee, could I have clarification on that? If, let's say, a restaurant were to move in where the, say, where the Middlesex Bank is now, and they wanted to have outdoor seating in the spaces that abutted that property, would we have any say in that, or would that be totally in front of the Select Board?
Um, the way it works is if it's on private property, if the parking spaces, that, that municipal lot captures parking spaces that are located on private property as well as public property. So to the extent that the outdoor seating is proposed on private property, where there's an easement for the parking spaces, it would be the Planning Board's jurisdiction. To the extent that the outdoor seating was on the public, on public land, then it would be the Select Board.
So, the way I understand most of the parking lot, if there were new restaurants going in, Marty, you know, where Masala Art is and where Heath is, they're using private property. But, for example, Middlesex Savings Bank or that entire area, that, those, those buildings that are fronted on Chestnut Street. If, if a restaurant went in there, I don't believe they'd be in front of us. I, I think if they wanted to use parking spaces for outdoor seating, they would, they would have to apply to the Select Board. Select Board would have to have, Select Board would have to have a public hearing on the application. So the other merchants, whose customers use the parking lot, would have an opportunity to ask the Select Board to, to not allow it, because they'd be taking away spaces. But I don't, I don't see how we could have a special permit that says you can't take away any existing spaces where that's basically what's there. There's nothing but parking spaces.
Marty, I think the goal of this really was to, right now, this, the, you know, the site plan that was issued for this municipal parking lot does not allow outdoor dining on any of the parking spaces. So I think the idea was to amend that permit so that the Planning Board or the Select Board, depending upon who has jurisdiction, could entertain applications to put outdoor dining on, on parking through the process that that board would follow and that this underlying permit would not get in the way of that.
Sorry. Adam, did you want to say something?
So I think for clarity, in the event that if a restaurant, as you say, went into what's now Middlesex Bank, and for clarity, we don't see that happening right away at all, or Chromasonic TV and those, those other businesses, they may have an easement for parking that relate to the private use. So those private parking spaces would be, you know, if someone applied for a special permit for outdoor seating on those private spaces in that public lot, then they would have to come before us, but otherwise it is to the Select Board.
The other, other than the area where Hearth Pizza is and where Masala Art is, are there any spaces that's on private property?
Farm, Farmhouse also has.
Yeah, that's in the same area as.
That's right.
I think it's just basically Simon's property, which is basically CVS, Hearth, and, and Farmhouse and Masala that are sitting on easements.
I have a plan. If it's helpful to show that I'm a plan, I can, I can put that up, Mr. Chairman.
No, that's okay. I think, I think we have an idea.
Okay.
Yes, Jean, you, you have your hand raised.
Yeah. I want to make sure, sure I understand this fully. It seems to me that what the Select Board is applying for pertains to that entire very large parking area behind CVS that is accessed off Chestnut Street and off that of the street. I mean, yeah, parallel to Chestnut Street over by the Unitarian Church. And what it allows, what it does is it amends the original special permit that was granted for the big parking lot so that the Select Board, for any restaurants abutting the parking lot, may on, on the parking lot, whether the town owns it in fee or whether the town holds an easement, as we're told is the case in some areas, excuse the home phone ringing. Yeah, Steve picked it up. That, we're just amending our special permit so that the Select Board now can allow this parking wherever the Select Board wants to do that. However, for the existing restaurants that have special permits, each one of them have to come to us to get an amendment of their special permit, as Hearth is doing. In the future, if a new restaurant goes in, we'll be granting a special permit. It will be our decision what conditions we want to attach to that special permit with regard to parking and outdoor seating. If I got that right, am I explaining that correctly?
I think, I, I think so. I would just offer, I think, one clarification, which is that we're, the existing permit covers the entire lot. So we're, we're, we're here to amend that permit because that's, that's what we're working with. We're working with, as a starting point, the permit that the board approved in 1998, covering the entire thing. But there is no intention, I don't, I don't believe, to allow for out, seasonal outdoor dining, really in any other part of the parking lot, other than what immediately abuts the three existing restaurants on, on Great Plains Ave, currently, currently, at least. There's, there's, there's no desire to work with any other part of the parking lot. So we're not, so as a matter of permitting, we're, we're, we're in front of the board with a permit that covers the entire lot. As a matter of actual parking spaces and actual seat seating, we're talking about the, the area that Hearth is currently occupying and maybe a very small area abutting Masala Art.
Yeah, Jean, Jean, I, I, I think you make a, a good point that if a new restaurant were to go into one of the spaces that abuts the parking lot, they would have to get a special permit from us. And at that, at that special permit hearing, we, we do have an opportunity to put our two cents worth in about, about the outdoor seating.
Yes, if I could add to that clarification, but there would not need to be any further amendment to the town's special permit for this parking lot, because we're taking care of that right now for the entire parking lot.
I just want to add one caveat to, to what Jean said, and that is, if you, if we issued a permit for another restaurant, let's say where the bank is located, and two years later, they decide they want to put outdoor dining there. It would not come back to us. It would, it would go to the Select Board if it's, if it's on the municipal lot and it meets the standards for that abbreviated process under section 6.9 of the bylaw.
Right. But in the initial application.
But the initial application.
We would have the opportunity to comment on it, to question them about what their plans are for outdoor seating. And, and, you know, to see, to see whatever plans with the parking lot that they may have in mind at that time.
That's correct.
So when Louis speaks of section 6.9, you're speaking of amendments or as only by that, that we enacted at the recent town meeting to make it easier to put in outdoor seating, is that correct?
That's correct. We, we modified that and that base rule basically allowed people, provided they met certain parameters, to be able to put in outdoor seating through, through a fast track process. So if they meet the fast track process in terms of what they're proposing, then it would just be the Select Board and they would not need any relief from you on private, I mean, excuse me, on public property.
On public property. Okay, thanks for reminding me of that. I, I now remember that, that concept. Yeah, good.
Any further comments or questions from the Planning Board?
This is, yes. I would only say, I think we're going to have to be very careful when we read the draft decision that Lee puts together, because we're splitting some hairs here. It's going to be hard for her to describe. So I'm just cautioning everybody that we got to be real careful when we draft this decision.
Okay. This is a public hearing, and so the public is invited to comment or to raise questions. I am not seeing any raised hands. Alex, are you seeing any raised hands from the attendees?
I don't.
I will give them a few seconds to use the raise hand button on their computers. If anybody from the attendees wishes to make a comment. We do have a lot of people here tonight. But I'm not seeing anybody. Yes, Jean?
We did, it wasn't our packets in email, and would, will you be mentioning that as a comment? The email from Amy Helson, our town staff, with a communication from Segaloff Jewelers, is that, is that considered?
You want, you want to read that, or do you want me to read it?
Yeah, no, I, I'm not asking that I read it, but I just wanted, wondered if it was something that was going to be read as part of the record.
No, I'd forgotten about it. I know I printed it.
Well, I have it here if you want me to read it.
Let me see if I can find it quickly. There you go. I got it. Yes, so so this, this was an email from Bernie Segaloff of Segaloff Jewelers to Amy Helson of the town, which Amy has forwarded to, to us. This was the only comment that we did receive, so I'll go ahead and read it. It's fairly short. Bernie writes, "I just had a conversation with a lawyer friend who read this, who read the legal notice." Bernie had previously seen it, I guess. And he got the same impression that I did that, that parking spaces may be taken. We've discussed. The wording is very vague. Could I ask you to reach out to the Planning Board on my behalf and forward them my concerns about losing parking space to them prior to the next meeting, which I believe is Tuesday? I would greatly appreciate this. I'm fine with their knowing that it comes from me. I just want my concerns to be known. And I think, I think that's, he had had prior communication with Amy Helson. When he first read the legal notice, he says, he writes, "With regard to the Chestnut and Lincoln Street parking lots, it is separate from the Hearth Restaurant request. I just want to make sure that we're not going to lose any more parking spots in the lots. Could you please check this with the Planning Board or the Select Board to make sure for me?" And he writes, "We can't afford to give up any more parking. It would result in the end of business." And so I, I guess we made it clear that at the present time, all we have are the use of space from Hearth Pizza and Masala Art. And what was that other restaurant that you mentioned? Which, which would not be taking any more spaces at this time. There's no application to take more spaces at this time. But, but this, this amendment to the special permit would allow for future applications, which would have to be approved either by the Planning Board or the Select Board, depending upon who had jurisdiction over the spaces in question. Okay. So with that, let's see if we had any more. Nope, no, no hands raised. So I will entertain a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Any discussion on closing the hearing? Hearing none will take the vote. There's a motion to close the hearing. Marty Jacobs.
Aye.
Adam Block.
Aye.
Natasha Spata.
Aye.
Jean McKnight.
Aye.
The Chair votes aye. It's unanimous. The hearing is closed. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you very much.
Good to see you.
You as well.
Will we, will we wait to have a decision before us in, in order to make a decision? Is that the plan?
Yes, I'll, I'll draft the decision and you can vote it at your next meeting. I'm assuming that you wish me to draft something in the affirmative.
You know, I just, I would like to emphasize that Chris's point that he made after some questions, that there is, the town has no intent to expand the number of parking spaces that it gives up at this time. I would like, like it to be clear in the decision that that's the town's position right now.
Okay.
That's fine. Okay, so the next matter on the agenda is another public hearing. This is a public hearing on, on an amendment to Major Project Site Plan Special Permit number 2006-04. Saul Soul Family Foods LLC, that's a tongue twister, doing business as Hearth Pizzeria. The petitioner for the property located at 974 Great Plains Avenue, Needham, Massachusetts. And it looks like the sole panelist who will be presenting tonight is Ivan Milan Pulecchio. Did I pronounce that correctly? Great. Who is the chef and co-owner of Hearth Pizzeria. Mr. Pulecchio, you have the floor.
Thank you so much. Again, my name is Ivan Milan Pulecchio, chef and owner of
Thank you so much. Um, again, my name is Ivan Milan Pulecchio, chef and owner of, uh, Hearth Pizzeria. Um, first, I would like to thank you all for allowing us to operate in the patio during the past year and a little bit more. It's been crucial to our business, uh, thus making us be here tonight, asking you for, um, an approval to allow us to keep our, uh, patio. Um, as you can see here, um, we do, we actually don't sit on any parking spots on the left side because there was never any parking spots. Um, I believe that we may be in front of one parking spot towards the right side where the farmhouse is. Um, the setup currently has, um, thirty-three seats outside or so, give or take, move, move in here and there. Um, we have made an enclosing, um, of wood, which contains, uh, trees that are all around. Um, we have a service station, a hand washing station. Um, and then as soon as you walk in through the back door, there are three bathrooms towards the left of the restaurant. Um, there is plenty of space to accommodate, um, wheelchairs. Um, we have been operating in this manner. Um, but we just would like to, um, legalize, uh, the seating.
Okay. Thank you very much. Uh, once again, we do have some communication from the town, the appropriate town agencies and boards. So let me read those into the record. We have an email from Dennis Condon, our fire chief. The fire department is okay with allowing this year-round usage, provided that the safety elements equal to or superior than those used on a temporary basis due to COVID are continued to be utilized. And we have, um, from John Schlippler, the police chief. Um, he writes, the police is okay with this application if the safety measures remain as previously approved. And, uh, we got some clarification. Because Alex Clea, our assistant planning director, asked Chief Schlippler, um, when you mentioned safety measures, are you referring to Jersey barriers to separate diners and vehicles? And he wrote, yes, it looks like they are in place and as long as they continue to use that setup and not alter it, it will be fine. And last, um, not lastly, we have an email from Cara Gurge, um, the assistant public health director, the public health division, conducted the review for a proposed amendment to the existing special permit for Hearth Pizzeria at nine seventy-four Great Plain Avenue regarding outdoor dining. And we have no comments to share at this time. And lastly, we have a letter from Thomas Ryder, our acting town engineer, who writes, for the engineering department, we have no general direction to the proposed plans. However, as the seating will be located within the town's municipal parking easement, select board approval will need to be sought as well. And I have no comments or questions. Are there any comments or questions from the other members of the planning board? Adam. Oh, I'm sorry, Marty, go ahead.
That's all right. Let Adam go first.
Okay, yes, Adam.
Um, I, I, I certainly understand, you know, the need to do it. I'm glad that it had been working for you before. And we're glad to be able to, uh, you know, to, uh, to continue. Just as a matter of clarity, Lee, I, I, I don't have the, uh, revised bylaw in front of me for outdoor seating. Was there a certain percentage of the number of seats inside that would be allowed outside?
Um, I, under the abbreviated process, you're right, it's thirty percent. Um, but in this case, they're actually amending their special permit because they're, because they're, the, the parking spaces are located on a private lot. The, the parking space, I mean, excuse me, the outdoor dining is located on, on basically a parking lot, um, which requires the, the amendment to the base permit. They are beyond the thirty percent here because they, I think their permits for a hundred seats and they're showing thirty, it's a thirty-eight outside or thirty-three. Um, and then I think also they're talking about doing it year round as opposed to just doing it within the seasonal limit. So they're asking for three basically uh, conditions that go beyond the, the expedited process. So yes, that's covered under their application.
I'm pleased to support this application. Thank you very much.
Marty?
Yeah, my question is, it was a reference to the town's existing easement. Can somebody explain to me just what that easement is and what, how I can find it and look at it and read it?
And if I may add, who owns the fee?
The fee is owned by the Simons. Um, at the time, at the time, or the property owner there, I think it's the Simon family owns the building, which includes CVS, includes Hearth and, and Farmhouse. At the time, the municipal parking lot was created. Um, it was basically done as a partnership between some of the private property owners, um, who had land there and the town that created the municipal lot. Um, and so the, even though the lot looks like a singular entity, um, it is, there's, you know, there are property lines that are running through it. So as it relates to Simon property, um, I think there are, there were six, six or eight parking spaces on that property. And the town had basically, I think the Simons just basically retained rights to access their property, you know, for maintenance of the building and to access their property for purposes of maintaining the outdoor dumpster behind their property. And the town basically had rights for those parking spaces in the back. And I can get you a copy of the easement documents, Marty. I have.
I'd like to see it and read it because it does, it, it sounds backwards to call it the town's easement. It sounds like it's Simon's easement. But let me reserve judgment until I see the document and read it.
Yep, um.
Yes.
Follow up to what Marty said, if I may, Jean. Um, I, by calling it the town's easement, I understood that the town is the holder of the easement. And that another party owns the fee.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Oh, Simon owns the property and, um, the, and he only reserved for himself on that property the rights to come onto it for to act to, um, to, um, up, to upgrade and maintain his building, um, and to access his dumpster in the back.
From, from the town's land.
From the town's land.
He has an easement over the town's land. And so.
No.
What is the town's?
The town has an easement to put parking spaces on that land to allow for parking on the land that's owned by Simon. And within that grant of easement, according to Lee, and we'll have to read it, Simon reserved the right to go over those parking spaces to, or to use areas of the parking spaces to have a dumpster, which I believe has been moved since then. Am I correct on that? Uh, Mr. Pulecchio, that the dumpster has been moved?
Um, remember there used to be a dumpster there. And there still is. Um, there's actually, so there's only five, there was only five spaces back there. I believe that one of the spaces was used to provide dumpsters for both nine seventy-four Great Plain Avenue, whichever the tenant is, which is Hearth Pizzeria right now, or the restaurant next to us, uh, which is the farmhouse. Uh, those, the town have moved the parking lot, uh, the dumpsters to the middle of the parking lot where those reside currently. However, the enclosure for that dumpster still exists. Um, and it's, and nobody uses that. It's just like a closed space that Simon did not want to, um, give out because if in the future there was a tenant that would move in, they had the autonomy to move the dumpster back into that area. Uh, thus leaving again five spaces. The two dumpsters that are still there are the two big green CVS dumpsters, which reside on the left side of, or behind where the patio is being proposed. You know, there is a sign there that, uh, that space should only be used technically for Hearth, Farmhouse and CVS customers. Um, as there's like a sign in, in that piece of the parking lot because there's only five spaces. That's what I said at the beginning. I'm only taking like one space out of those five, just so how back I am. Um, and then the other restaurants taking the other, um, the remaining of those. But there is still two dumpsters there and an enclosure for a dumpster.
So I, I think what that means, I'm still unclear. I think what that means is that the reference to the town's easement means that the town had the right to access that area behind Hearth and, um, to, for, for parking, for, I don't know, four spaces, five spaces, six spaces. I'm not clear. And that the town has surrendered that right in favor of allowing Hearth to use this as a patio. Is that what has happened? And is that what Hearth is asking to see continued? I'm, I'm just looking to understand what's going on. I mean, I don't really have any problem with the patio idea. I think it works probably pretty well for you and I, I think it's, it's good. I'm just trying to understand the legality of it. What has the town done to allow the, the easement for parking spaces on private property to be traded for the patio? How did, what documentation is there for that?
I'll call out and get you the easement documents. You know, it's possible, Marty, now that we're having this conversation that, um, I have misinterpreted them in the sense that, um, um, the, the fight, that whether that the town actually has rights in those five parking spaces or whether or not the easement document that I reviewed was just Simon getting the rights to cross the town's property for the purpose of his dumpster. I, I, I will make those documents available to you.
Okay, thank you. I, yeah, I need to review it and understand it. That's all. Okay.
But the initial use of the patio during COVID, I don't recall your being in front of us for that. You must have gotten permission from the select board.
Yes.
To use, to use the parking spaces for your outdoor, for your outdoor seating during COVID.
That's correct. That's how it was done.
Yep. So the select board probably still has jurisdiction. I think we probably have joint jurisdiction over the outdoor seating where it's both private property and the town's use of the land for parking spaces.
Which is why I think Tom called out in his letter that there needs to be some acknowledgement of the easement. Um, and the selectman's approval for the, because of, of the placement of the outdoor seating on the easement.
Yeah, but I, I'm, I'm probably getting too picky here, but if what the town had was a right to use the private area for parking, it, that's all it had. It didn't have the right to grant or not grant uh, the right to use that area for patio space. All they had the right to do was exercise their right to use the parking space easement or give it up or give it up for the time being.
Okay, Marty, Marty, you're back to where you were at the beginning, which is what, which is my third rule of practicing law.
Which is?
If there's a writing, read the writing.
There you go.
So that's where we have to be. Let's get copies of the agreement between Simon and the town.
So.
And we'll, and, and we'll see what we're dealing with.
Yeah.
Yes, Jean?
Um, I, I agree certainly that we have to see this easement, uh, because we have to know how to write up the decision. Um, and, um, it, it seems to me, uh, if the, the town holds an easement for parking, therefore, um, they will be putting this seating area on an area where the town has an easement for parking. And I think it was said in, in this material attached to the application for site plan review, that they will be, uh, using at least one of the, uh, uh, parking spaces that had been painted on the parking lot. And that one space, um, will be occupied by their, uh, Jersey barriers. Um, but if, if the other, if the fee owner is the owner of the property that the restaurant is the less see of, then of course the fee owner can let them use the property for outdoor dining. It's between the applicant and the fee owner.
Right now. Well, unless there's something in the particular restaurant's permit with us that says can't use anything, can't have any outdoor dining.
Exactly. And that's what, that's what we're being asked to amend here. Uh, I do find this application to be not very, um, not very good at explaining, um, the background. Uh, all we have is a one-page application for site plan review and attached to it are applications for outdoor seating under six point nine of the zoning bylaw. And those applications, and I think it's, it seems like there's duplicates of two applications attached for the same thing, but anyway.
Um, I think the copies are the same application, Jean.
Yeah, that's what's here. So, um, but also we, we keep being told that the property owner is the name that Solomon, but this application for site plan review is signed by Kopley Investments' owner's name.
That, that, that is the Simon family. They're doing it, the name of their company is Kopley Investments. And sorry, it's owned, it's owned by the Simon family.
Okay.
Just, just to move this forward, uh, do we, we have to keep this hearing open to be able to receive those documents, Lee, that you've discussed, correct? So we can make a motion to close the hearing at this time.
Well, you can make a motion to close the hearings and to allow for those documents to come into the record.
So moved.
Second.
Well, okay, I'm going to have further discussion. Um, Mark, Marty, are you okay with that? Or do you think that we have, we, we might have further discussion once we've read the easements?
We might have further discussion and looking at these, one or two documents that he's going to give us might lead to the need to see more.
Yeah, I know.
Therefore, I withdraw my motion to it, to close the hearing.
So if you, if we, if we, if it would have gone this way and it needs to be more discussion, we'd have to reopen it again? Is that Marty, what you're saying?
If we were to close this now, we'd have to reopen, yes.
But I think we're just going to continue it until the next, the next meeting.
I move to, I move to continue the hearing.
I second that.
To February fourth.
Lee, in time.
February, I didn't have this on to be continued. It's February fourth, I guess, is the next meeting.
No, February first.
February first, okay. And Alex, is it good time, seven thirty?
Yeah, I would say you can do this first, but Ivan is raising his hands. I just want to make sure that that works for him, doesn't he?
Uh, no, that, uh, works. I just wanted to address one last thing, if I may.
Sure, go right ahead, please do.
Um, we, we talk about the parking spaces and I guess that we have to do a, a different drawing, uh, just to show what, what I'm intended to do, but we're behind the dumpsters of CVS. So nobody parks there. There, it's an empty, empty space that, that is not being used that I fixed so that we could have the outdoor seating.
Does, but it provides the access to those spaces, doesn't it?
Um, not really, because we are on the left portion and the, like if this is the building where it ends, these are the dumpsters. This is my patio. This is where the parking spots enter. So we are not on any getting in or out, actually the farmhouses and all the parking spaces. You know, so we, we never took any parking spaces, nor you can't drive in if let's say the farmhouse didn't have a patio, you could still park all your cars there. Uh, but obviously you can't because the farmhouse has also the outdoor patio. Um, so Hearth is technically not taking any parking spots.
I actually, for, for.
I actually, from from the packet, I have a diagram of it, if I can share really quickly.
Sure.
It's, it's from the, from the packet that, from the next one. It's basically, the hearth is on this side and this is farmhouse. So the farmhouse is on it, but you still have to, you know, in order to get in, you would have to access
Right.
this piece. But the the question that I have also is um, farmhouse as well will probably eventually, if they come for this, it would just be good to know where the easement is, is the easement here, is that, you know?
Uh, I think the easement is at the entry somewhere. It's
Right. So if this is private property, we just, we just have to get that information, but this is, this is where it is right now. And there are no, no parking spaces in the dumpsters, I believe, are in this location.
I, Ivan, are you doing outdoor dining at this time right now?
And no, we're not, because we uh, we were told that as effective uh, November thirtieth, we couldn't do any, so we shut it down, we closed it down.
That's right. So um, I apologize for the delay, and yet it's a technicality that we need to resolve. So we'll uh, look to do that quickly. Uh, that date, Lee, that you mentioned for which this would be continued. Is that also the night of uh, further deliberations or uh, resolving the decision rather on sixteen eighty-eight?
Yes.
Yes, but we could do this first, maybe, right? Maybe, this is a good question, since we have Natasha here. Do we wanna start the meeting at seven o'clock? Does that work for people? In which case, we could do this at seven.
I'm fine with that.
Okay, fine, now let's just get, schedule this for first, um, next, at the next meeting at, in first thing, seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock, that works for me. Yes, Jean.
At seven o'clock. Uh, Natasha put up um, a visual. I'm not quite sure what that visual was. Um, but I wonder, as part of our packet, um, could, could we have a copy of the uh, original plan? That the, that the, the parking lot plan?
Yes, I think we, that, we, we, we intended to include that in the package. That, that was supposed to be in the package. I might not know if there was a mistake, it got omitted, as well as the architectural drawings you sho- that you saw tonight, which actually show the photos of the, of the outdoor dining and then the architects rendering in terms of what was proposed.
Yeah, it, because this, you know, there's very little in this package to go.
Right.
All right, thank you.
I know, I know, we have a motion on, on the floor, Paul, but just, we're still in discussion, are we not?
Yes, yes, we are.
So my, my only thing, and this is really more thinking out loud than anything else, is I'm, I'm wondering whether, when we see the documents that we're gonna see, whether it might might require us to revisit the previous petition we just heard from Chris Heap. Um, I'm just, and therefore maybe have to reopen that one. I don't know. I mean.
If it raises a question, we will speak to Mr. Heap about reopening that hearing. Before we get to the motion, this is a public hearing, so I do have to give those who are uh, in attendance an opportunity to speak. Um, I am not seeing any hands raised among the attendees.
I see one.
Oh, yeah, we have one. Artie Crocker, you wanna bring Mr. Crocker in? Artie, you seem to be in, if you wanna unmute yourself and.
Sorry about that, dude.
Artie, welcome.
Turn off video since I love the lighting correct. Uh, thanks, Paul. I just wanted to say, there's almost nothing been better for the community in some ways during this trying times. And I, then this opening up of the outdoor dining and it's, and it's I've quite obvious how complex it is, as, as Marty, you were mentioning somewhat earlier, with some of the rules going on. And when, when all it's, when, when we're left at the end of the day, we got the, the, the law, the law and the bylaws are set in place. And what that's, what that's gonna mean in the future. And I guess we don't really know in totality what it means in the future of what we're doing now. Except for what we're doing now, it has a huge benefit for the community. And Ivan does a fabulous job, like of course, the other restaurants in town, but Ivan does a fabulous job with the outdoor dining. So I commend you, I commend you guys with doing whatever you can to make this happen and stay, stay in place. That's all I meant.
Yep.
Well, thanks, dude.
Uh, Paul, can I just respond very briefly to Artie? Thank, thank you for that. I just wanna make it clear. Nothing I raised uh, should reflect at all on what Ivan's doing uh, or his plan. I, I'm just raising it to try to get the documentation right and whatever we need to write up next, that that be right. Um, that's the whole point of my questioning and nothing else.
Oh, absolutely, Marty. I, I totally got that. This is, this is really a, a, I guess I use the word high, the complex, I think you used the word complex. Because it is, you know, we can, we can, we, we see what we want to accomplish for the community. But how you make, how you write everything at the place where something doesn't come back and bite you in the future isn't, isn't, isn't as obvious of what you have to do, is we, we, we're just all coming together. And I don't know how, I don't, I don't know how else to proceed besides how you're proceeding right now. And so, thanks, guys.
Sure, thanks, Artie.
And.
Thanks. Hey, um, yes, Natasha.
Paul, I just wanna tell Ivan, I'm also in support. I just wanna make sure that it's written correctly, so you don't have to come back here and so that we look forward for the future. So um, highly support the dining.
Yeah. Yes, Ivan.
Go right ahead.
Uh, no, I just, you know, there's, there's been no doubt in my mind that the town and each one of you has uh, the best interests. And part of this is making sure that we do move forward in, in, in a proper manner um, for current owners of restaurants as well as future ones. Um, because, you know, we wanna make sure that we're taking the appropriate steps and not, you know, give ten back when the time needs to happen. So I'm totally thankful, I totally understand, um, you know, and, and I will see you guys at the next meeting and we'll move forward then, but thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Jean, did you have something else?
Sure, just quick. Um, I noticed that uh, Mr. Sickleup's email specifically refers to the uh, hearth application. So I wanna make sure that we make his email part of the record and uh, since the motion is before us is to continue the hearing. We just remembered a reference that uh, Adam continued here.
Okay. I'm not quite sure that his, he, his comments really went to this application. They went more to the, to the town's application, because he was concerned about losing spaces. And I think he just made the reference that he recognizes that right now, the application is only hearth. Hearth pizza, and so there, that, that there aren't spaces being lost at the present time, but he recognized that. Uh, okay, before I entertain the motion, um, any further hands raised?
Yes, there's.
Yes, Carolyn Day, wanna bring this, Ms. Day in? Alex, does Miss Day have to turn on her own video and unmute herself?
Hi, sorry. How are you guys?
Hi, welcome.
Thank you. I haven't been on any of these formally, but I've been listening for a bit. Um, I just wanted to raise the point, just to make sure we're um, remembering the rat situation that was a few years ago um, with all the dining outside. So I think everything's been going really well, but I just wanna make sure, you know, the board health stays on that and make sure um, you know, we're, we're remembering uh, just the rat issue that had happened. So that's all.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, any other, no, from the board, I don't see any other hands raised for participants. So, um, I did hear Adam make the motion to continue the hearing to February first at seven o'clock. I don't recall whether there was a second.
It was.
It was, okay.
I'll, I'll second it again if, if.
Okay, thank you, Marty. Uh, let's take the vote. Mr. Jacobs.
Aye.
Mrs. Spada.
Aye.
Mr. Block.
Aye.
Ms. McKnight.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. We have continued the hearing to uh, February first at seven o'clock. And Ivan will see you then. But thank you for coming in. Okay, that, that concludes our public hearings. The next item on the agenda is a seven forty-five appointment. Um, we are well beyond seven forty-five. Uh, with regard to redevelopment at eight eighty-eight Great Plain Avenue. Um, I have recused myself from this matter, so Adam, I am handing over the gavel to you. And Alex, if you would uh, move me out as a, being a participant. Um, move me into the attendee section. Anna.
Thank you. Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Um, I understand that we're gonna bring over uh, Alex, uh, Mr. Jenta, who we see, welcome. George, good to see you again. Happy year. And uh, Jay, we're gonna bring over. And uh, I think we're all, I see that we have uh, Nick Landry, the architect. Uh, if you gentlemen can turn on your uh, videos, we can see you. Very good, thank you very much. Before I turn this over to you, George, uh, Jay and uh, Nick, just uh, a couple of comments, if you'll indulge me. We've, um, I'd like to note for the record that we've received recently twenty-seven emails and letters about this proposal uh, to redevelop eight eighty-eight um, Great Plain. We also received a number of emails and letters that I think we had read into the record at a, a previous uh, meeting, and those letters and emails were from November of last year. I do understand that um, that some have expressed concern that they were not provided notice of the meeting tonight, and I just wanna uh, clarify the process here for those that are watching. Uh, uh, as we're not opening this appointment up for public comment. From time to time, a developer will ask for an appointment like this for the board uh, to discuss a concept or a development proposal, whether requiring a zoning change or not. It's common practice here, as it is in other parts, other towns and cities uh, within the Commonwealth. Uh, these appointments are designed to provide feedback from the board to the developer that informs the developer's process and certain aspects of their concept or their uh, development proposal. And that uh, these appointments or meetings are not public hearings, they do not require legal notice, and they do not require uh, public comment. When a developer does apply to the planning board for a special permit, a public hearing is required. Public notice of that uh, public hearing is uh, is provided. And uh, there is a notice and members of the uh, to the neighbors and members of the public are given an opportunity to speak at the hearing. The notice provisions for a public hearing that relates specifically to a zoning change are a little bit different than those for a public hearing relating to a special permit application. Uh, when the board um, decides that a zoning change is needed, we provide notice of a public hearing and we, and members of the public are permitted to speak. But for clarity, we're not there presently. Uh, we remain grateful for the public's engagement. Uh, your comments are helpful and they are considered as part of our decision-making process. So I just wanted to uh, to note that for the record, and now I'm happy to turn it over to you, George.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, and in fact, you stole several of my opening comments. Uh, be- because I have become aware that uh, there's been a lot of chatter in the community. And uh, and I think some of that is a misunderstanding. You know, we provided a set of plans for the board to look at, to give an idea of something that could be done under what we're proposing. And uh, and you know, when we do that, it, I'm always a little wary, because uh, people will sometimes look at those and say, well, this is exactly what's being proposed and this is what the discussion is. And obviously, the board knows that those are just sort of an illustrative example of something that might be possible under what we're talking about. And that's exactly what we're doing, is having a discussion about what might happen. And uh, and those plans, although we happen to think that they're decent to start po- start with, they are a starting point for discussion and not a uh, a final, final proposal. Um, so uh, with that, if I can, I'd like to share my screen just to kinda refresh the recollection, because it's been a while since we last uh, discussed this property. Uh, so let me uh, just pull up a little it's uh, basically kinda what Natasha had head up. Uh, and the, the other plan that I had presented. All right, so here we go. So you can see here in the, in the salmon color or pinkish color, right, this is the, this is eight eighty-eight Great Plain Avenue, the property that we are talking about. Uh, this is the commercial block that runs along Great Plain Avenue down to Dedham. This is the Christian Science Church, this is the Baptist Church, uh, the YMCA, the field and the commercial block uh, across the street here. And uh, you can see from this, uh, just sort of looking at it sort of uh, holistically, that this property, which is zoned for single-family residential, is really smack in the middle of a number of non-single-family residential uses. And it is immediately bordered on two sides by commercial activities. On, on the one side by the commercial block and the, and a little bit of parking in back, and then the commercial parking lot that is partly a private lot for the building at sixty Dedham Avenue, as well as the municipal parking lot here. It also kinda joins this parking area, which um, is used by one or both of the churches. Uh, and then obviously directly next door is the Christian Science Church. So, you know, looking at this, you can understand, I think, why we are proposing to change the zoning and do something different with this lot. Uh, this lot doesn't really make uh, and to me, to my client, a lot of objective sense to be a single-family residential house. It just sort of doesn't visually or otherwise seem to be appropriate there. So we've at, you know, we've started off with the, with the request to extend the center business district, which ends here. And extend it over to include this piece, because it's immediately adjacent to it. Uh, now, this is an open discussion, so you know, we also recognize that maybe some other zoning relief or other change to the zoning bylaw uh, might be more appropriate or might be a better idea. But this is the whole point of this process, is to have these discussions. Obviously, extending the center business district is sort of the easiest and, and has some precedent for it in terms of, in the overall history of planning and zoning and the way that is done. Uh, but we're having this discussion. So at the last hearing, you know, we looked at the proposal and, Alex, you stop sharing my screen now. We looked at the proposal, the proposed building, and we discussed a couple of aspects of it. And one aspect in particular, we started to get into, but we didn't have enough time to really flesh out, was the, our, our request to for, get some relief on the side yard setback. And so I provided a supplemental letter that kinda walks through that. And it really, it's not the front yard, it's not the rear yard uh, that are the issues. It is the side yard, and in particular, the side yard uh, that would be adjacent to the Christian Science Church, assuming that there was some extension of the center business district or some other rezoning to put this into some commercial or business zone. And the issue there is, the bylaw currently imposes a fifty-foot setback for properties adjacent to a residential uh, district boundary. And that obviously is a substantial amount. And while you can use twenty-five feet for accessory purposes, you cannot have a, any commercial uh, any commercial building, structure or use in that accessory twenty-five feet. Even in the center business district overlay, uh, that's the same thing, although the overlay does allow for underground, an extension of underground parking up to ten feet from the setback, but you still can't use the surface, uh, the, the twenty-five foot on the surface for any building structure or so on. So although it's a little better under the overlay, it's still a bit problematic when it comes to redeveloping some of these properties. And you know, I, I know, and I think the board knows, this has come up on some occasions with some other properties that were redeveloped, that were adjacent to residential properties. It's caused the need for a couple of variances uh, for handicap accessibility, for elevators, to allow handicap access to second floors and a couple of commercial buildings. And it's sort of, it's a, it's an issue that has been a, a problem to deal with. You know, in other locations in town as well. While I would love to advocate to change it across the board, yeah, tonight, and for the purposes of this property, we're limiting the discussion just to this. Yeah, tonight and for the purposes of this property, we're limiting the discussion just to this property and you know, the possible expansion of Center Business District. So really, I guess what we would be proposing, if the board is willing to extend the Center Business District or make some other zoning change to put this property into a commercial district would be for some relief relative to the 50 foot setback and maybe make it by a special permit mechanism limited just to the Center Business District or the overlay district so that it's something that would have some tight reins with respect to discretion. Wouldn't be something that could be abused sort of all over town. But so, you know, looking at the lot, and again, it's, you know, where it is, it's configuration. It would be difficult to really develop this lot without some relief. At the very least, from the 50 foot mark. And part of the problem of that is if this property is put, whether it be the Center Business District or other commercial district, you're right now in the center district, even under the overlay, the first floor of any building can't be used for residential, it has to be used for commercial. So as a result, a first floor of any building would have to be at least 50 foot from the the side. And that makes development a bit difficult. In order to get sort of a reasonable number of units, you end up having a cantilever, the second floor. And as Adam, you saw the original design, and I think Natasha did as well. It ends through a very, quite frankly, not not the most attractive design, not the most interesting building, a very kind of commercial block Soviet kind of design. And so obviously, we didn't, we don't really like that. We don't think it's appropriate, but that's what the bylaw would kind of force you to do. So we've asked for the relief to try and provide some flexibility. So when it comes time to actually do a good and proper final design to present to the board that we have some flexibility to be able to do something that works and makes sense that we're not tied into a ugly design that that doesn't really work for anybody.
So I'm sorry, did?
So that's it. So as a part of our ongoing discussion, I know we'd love to love to hear some feedback and see, you know, what concerns the board has and how we might, you know, help move this forward to to get a zoning change so that we can make some reasonable redevelopment of this property.
So I think that's a helpful outline. There is some misconceptions that I've read. And that may be affecting some people's understanding of the of the proposal, which I think is probably worth acknowledging that although this this isn't a residential district and the structure itself was a house. For the last 40 years or so, it had been operating as a business in a resident in what has become, since it's the creation of the building. Nonconforming use, basically, it's preexisting, it's a lawful, preexisting, nonconforming use. We have a house in what's in a, we have a house in a residential district that's been used lawfully as a business. And it's true that there is commercial, you know, there it's it's surrounded by commercial activity. And on the, you know, including on the north, other than the field, you know, effectively by the Y and by the other businesses along Pickering, it really is a transitional area. You know, I think Lee and Natasha, you know, we we talked about the concept of trying to encourage as elsewhere in the zoning, there is, you know, a desire to to promote mixed use. There are some challenges to this, though. One is, if I understand correctly, when I took a walk on the weekend, I don't think there's a curb cut between Denham Avenue and Warren Street. Is that right on Great Plain?
Well, there is a driveway. And and but other than, let's see, I'm trying to think, other than that, there might not be. This might be the only curb cut in the whole block.
So that presents a real challenge because there are so many families east of here, you know, in the latter districts and the related streets, you know, that are intentionally walking distance to you know, Greenfield in the center of town. And there are a ton of kids on the weekend and after school that are like my son, I think we played soccer there and we certainly have gone there, you know, to play and run around. And I know that other families do too. And and having, I think, if I understand correctly, the current proposal, the theory is 24 units of residential and three units of commercial, is that correct?
Right, yes.
So that could be a pretty intense use of vehicles coming in and out of that curb cut, which can be problematic, you know, when you've got businesses, you know, kids are going to be coming in and out of not kids, adults too, are going to be running in and out of the Needham House of Pizza habits, I think is there. And you know, at minimum, whatever we did allow, if there was a curb cut there, I would certainly want to be clear of our expectations for any audio and visual alarm system for, you know, for entry and exits because safety in that section really has to be paramount. And I think that that is a legitimate municipal concern. I'm not I'm not closed off to it, but I'm not a fan of it. I would strongly prefer and recommend to enter into agreements and whatever may be required, although I appreciate Jay, this is not an easy thing. And I certainly don't mean to simplify this. But to have access to it through that municipal lot, through that parking lot, south of the lot, that that would be the that would be the only vehicular access to the building. And that obviously pedestrian, you know, access would be in the front of the building. That would do a lot to assuage my concerns about safety. Not close off to it, but I do have some strong concerns. I also given that this is a transitional zone or transitional geographical area, I don't mind the concept of of, you know, retail on the first floor and floor to a residential, that concept generally I'm I'm fine with. I'm not sure that I'm comfortable with the density with 24 units. And you know, having gone through, the board has gone through recently an application on another project, which related to setbacks. And one of the deep dives, one of the lessons we learned from the deep dive in that prior application was a function of setback as between residential and commercial zones. And a lot of towns actually have 100 foot setback between commercial and residential districts. Here it's 50. I think to go from 50 to 10 feet is is a high bar to achieve. I'm not sure. I'm not comfortable going to that level. That has a critical impact on the width of the building and the number of units and the size of units, you know, Jay, that you're looking to to develop. Another thought that another question that had come up was a question about the height. And there had been some concerns about 35 feet and three stories being out of character with the area. Personally, I don't think that that's the case when I've walked down Warren Street, there are a number of homes that are at least that height. Some new construction, some even, I think, a little bit older. So so if it were designed to look as if it were a house, I think that might have a little bit a little bit of an easier time. If it was effectively smaller, narrower with access from Denham Avenue or from Warren Street, that would be the ideal scenario. I'm not convinced, I know I've had some experience, but I certainly don't have a crystal ball. I'm not convinced that that being that we'd be able to get this through town meeting, whether you as a citizen's petition proposed it or whether we as the planning board proposed it. I think Marty, you may have raised a question before about whether this would effectively be spot zoning. And if we extend a zoning district, I don't know that it it would be, but there are a number of tests that relate to spot zoning that we have to be very clear about. And just to throw, because it's the it's in football, it's the wild, we just passed the wild card weekend. One question I think the board should consider is the extent to which we actually extend some kind of a mixed use scenario all the way, you know, to Warren Street that would cover, you know, the two churches and this property as an effort to, you know, to promote or achieve some, you know, the mixed use goals that the town has. With that, I open this up for further comment and discussion from any of my colleagues. Gene.
Yes, I I think Mr. Jenta is is before us to get our responses. So I want to be fully there with what my responses are here. First of all, our our chairman here for this meeting, Adam, suggested that the the prior existing garden center is a lawful, preexisting, nonconforming use under state law and under our bylaw. I I am not certain of that by any means. My understanding is that this that garden center was allowed as an agricultural use, which is a permitted exception in residential districts. And I don't think it has the status for preexisting, nonconforming use or step or 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 structure that can be relied on to 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 provide an exception that, well, the old building was 20 feet away, so this one should be or could be. And then Mr. Jenta mentioned that the only relief he'd need would be on the side from the 50 foot setback. But the rear of the property also a subresidential district. And the plan that was provided, the site plan shows the building to be set back only 20 feet. So I ask, and maybe an immediate response is is good idea on that question. Don't you need, if you're going to build the building you're showing, don't you also need some kind of relief from the 50 foot setback at the rear?
So actually, Jean, let me respond to both of those. I'll do the the more recent first. So the short answer is no, because, and let me share my screen again, so I can show you. All right. So if you can see here, again, this is us here in the salmon or pinkish color. This is 60 Denham Avenue. As you can see, there's this tailpiece. This is actually part of the 60 Denham Avenue property, and this is actually included in the Center Business District.
Thank you for that clarification. All right.
We are, we we border the residential along this line, this line, and then this line up to Great Plain Avenue. So so yeah, we do, we do sort of from back in here, but not from the back. So it's technically not a rear line that we have the issue, but it but it is on the back corner here. Yes. Yes. And that and that so that's part of to looking at it in terms of little digression here with respect to the spot zoning question. Because we are bordered by the Center Business District on these two sides. And this essentially squares off the district. That's part of my logic or my rationale, why I don't think this would fail for spot zoning. This does not constitute spot zoning, in other words, at least in my opinion. But so I just want to point that out now. Now let me stop the share and address your first comment.
Mr. Jenta, can can you put that back on a second? I just have one quick question based on what Jean was saying is, so the three, the three line, thank you. So I'm just gonna annotate really quickly and in blue here. So this side, this side and this side would require the 50 foot setback at this moment.
Yes, correct. That is correct.
But your plan doesn't show that your plan shows 10 feet here, 20 and 20.
Yes.
Okay.
Right, right. And you know, we haven't really specifically talked about the 20 because if it's reduced down to 10, then obviously 20 is is sufficient for that.
If that makes sense. But those three, those three lines, because the other ones about the commercial are the ones that are the 50 feet.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay.
Okay. All right. So now, Jean, to your first point. So so actually, my based on the my research, my understanding is that what happened was this property was initially like 50 years ago, 75 years ago, it was a single family house. And then at some point, over 40 years ago, or whenever it was, it was used for the for the Hill for Hillcrest Gardens for basically the the agricultural activity. And at the time, there was no lot size requirement for for that sort of a use. But immediately after they began using this property, the the town amended the bylaw to require that you have at least, I think it's two and a half acres for a nursery or other similar use. So as a result, they were rendered nonconforming and they were nonconforming ever since. So they started on.
As to lot size.
Well, as to use, because the use specifically required a minimum two and a half acres. So you can only use.
When we, I know, I mean, I know we're going in the direction of rezoning. So and I agree, if we rezone and continue the zone that we have, the underlying zone center business with the overlay, it's not spot zoning. And we don't even have to consider that issue. But to the extent any relief is asked based on this being a prior nonconforming use or structure, I would want certainly to get an opinion from town council on that issue.
Sure.
Um, so I want to mention an issue that I have, what I consider a very serious issue with the proposed design. Now, the office building where I, my practice was in downtown Boston on Arch Street, the back, the back alley, which was also a regular public way with sidewalks, that's where the entrance to the underground garage was. Wasn't a major sidewalk, wasn't, you know, it was right around the corner from from Summer Street. But whenever one would come in or out of that parking, especially out out of that parking garage, yeah, you had lights, you had warnings. But it was very tense as a driver because you knew that could be people walking along that sidewalk. And even though there were flashing lights for the people, there's a feeling of tension and conflict in a situation like that. And especially when you're coming up from a parking garage and you really don't have any visibility at all until you're at the sidewalk. I would rather see in this project, a driveway, I realize you have to have access. Take a look at 1517 Oak Street in the Chestnut Street business that was recently built by Tadoli. He's got the, he's got the driveway on the left, goes to the back and the entrance is in the back. And if you have to respect the 50 foot setback, you can have your driveway right to the left and come in to the side too. And you could even build your parking garage, you know, for further beyond the the building outline underground because of the permission for parking garages underground. But I would not want to see that drive that entrance to that underground parking garage coming right out to that sidewalk. I just feel it will be unsafe and the whole thing should be rethought. And I think we've gotten many comments along those lines from from residents and concerned about that. And I mean, the residents are concerned also about any driveway coming out there, but certainly that kind of a of a underground parking garage entrance, it seems to me is particularly unsafe. And I I note that your dimensions, dimensional table mentions 35 feet height. But per the special permit overlay, you can't go up to 37 feet. And I think you, you know, you can go to three stories. You are proposing three stories, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. And the third story has to be set back, doesn't it?
I think it has the three plus one.
Oh, so it's the fourth story.
I think.
Denham, 50 Denham Ave has three stories of apartments above, right? Your, your, your neighbor 50 Denham Ave. I think it does. So I wondered if you were considering that as an alternative, for example, if the building had to be made smaller on, because you weren't going to get that 50 foot setback relief, could you go up as an alternative, as long as you had that setback? What I'm looking for is, I was just out today taking a photo of 50 Denham Ave. And
Jean, what you might.
It's three full stories and a fourth for, a fourth story setback. So I believe that's what the center business district overlay allows. Might that be an option for you?
It, it very well might. And, you know, and this kind of goes back to my comment about what we've shown you for design is sort of our initial thinking, you know, based on sort of the, the most basic parts of the center business district and the overlay. And I will say, when we did that, I mean, one of the things we were mindful of is we did not want to go too high. Because we did recognize that this is somewhat of a transition zone as, as a chairman, Mr. Black pointed out. So we didn't want to go sort of on the higher end. We wanted to try and keep it, you know, sort of more with what sort of standard residential construction is at the 35 foot mark. But you know, that, that might be, and that might be something we have to look at. Once, it's tough to add, it's tough to answer design questions without having an idea of the full parameter of restrictions that we have to work in with. So, you know, with, so it, it really is tough to directly answer your question. I might throw it to Nick, Nick Landry, the architect who's, who's here tonight. Just if he wants to weigh in with a comment on that.
Yeah, I think, I think that, like you said, I, I think we, we are trying to keep the building at a lower height, just so there wasn't this large difference between us and the neighboring commercial strip next door. I think that's certainly something we could look at is adding that floor. As far as the parking entry goes, I think we did talk about coming off the, the parking lot at one point. I think there's, there is, our lot has that weird little tooth missing in the back on that, on that corner, which makes it kind of hard to get in. But I think that's something that we could look at. I think it would mean that we lose a few parking spots. And I'm not sure. I think that part of the lot is not owned by the city. So I don't know, I don't know what that means for this discussion. Does that help?
Yes, it does. Thank you. And you mentioned the number of parking spaces. Is the number of parking spaces simply reflective of what our zoning bylaw requires for 24 units and for the commercial spaces? Or are you providing more parking than is what, and then what is required?
The number of spaces is basically a function of what's the most spaces that we can fit in the underground parking to provide as much parking as we can. The bylaw requires one and a half spaces per unit. So, so that would be 36 spaces. So we have, you know, basically we would cover that. But then we don't really have, I think we have what, one extra space for commercial use. So, you know, we don't, we would have to seek a waiver on that point and which kind of dovetails back in that whatever actual proposal we would bring forward, there might be any number of waivers we may or may not need. And there's, you know, we haven't even gotten to that point yet, because they said, we don't know the full parameter of restrictions that we will be working with. But, but yeah, basically we tried to, we tried to maximize the parking to start with and then, you know, kind of walk back from there.
Okay. And this is, this is my final, final comment. As I'm sure you know, the planning board has established a housing plan working group. And we're going to be meeting and having public input sessions over the, over the next year. And we'll be looking at this entire area, Chestnut Street, all the overlay districts in, in the center business with a view to, you know, we rezone these areas to encourage multifamily housing, to, to encourage mixed use housing, which is what you're proposing. And we have had very few proposals. The 5050 Denham Avenue is the only one that's been built under the overlay. And 1517 Oak Street was built under the underlying zoning. And I think, you know, Great Plains Avenue across from the mobile station was built into the underlying zoning as an excuse residential. So why, I mean, this came in about 15 years ago. Why have we had so few proposals? Is it, it's been suggested, especially lately, that, well, retail use is having a hard time. Should we be allowing? And therefore I'm not saying, people are saying, I'm not saying the people who are talking about retail use is saying this, but it leads me to think in, in the work of this housing plan study committee, should we be talking about whether we should allow standalone multifamily housing in our downtown in Needham Heights? And what, what, as a, the attorney for developer and maybe Mr. Drenzo wants to have a comment on this, is it an economically feasible for, to build solely standalone multifamily housing, or does the mixed use actually add economic value to a project like this?
I'll interject real quick, Jean. The last time we spoke, you asked me the same question. You asked me to go back and, and, and remember the thought behind it. The way the building stands today, we definitely need the, the commercial component for the economic ability of the project.
Thank you for reminding me that I asked that question before.
Second November, yes.
And in the back of my mind, that's what I thought. Did I ask that before? Okay. Okay. Those were my questions and comments.
And Jean, and I'll just add to that from, from my work in town with other property owners and other developers. There are situations where it might be something that is an attractive thought and somebody might consider it, but one of the big issues that, that immediately comes up is can you provide sufficient parking to make it work? And then on top of that, do you have enough of available footprint to, to work with that you can fit in your access to the upper floors for residential, because now you have to have an elevator and sufficient egress, you know, and all the things that go with that. So it doesn't always, I've had a couple of people explore the possibility. And it turned out that it was just too much cost, too much effort. It, it wasn't likely to net anything in the end and it might've been a loss. So I think there are a lot of, I think it's, it's very much a property specific factor. This particular property, because it's a decent size with a roughly, you know, roughly rectangular footprint, other than in the, than the back where it's got the angle point and that little tooth that's taken out, you know, this, this provides some more flexibility. But, you know, you look at some of the pieces in the downtown area and the, the properties themselves are either not that big or they're not that wide, or, you know, they have configuration issues. Or they may be subject to easements with, with adjacent properties that make it difficult to redevelop. So I think there's a bigger answer to your question, sort of for other, for all the properties that possibly could come into that. And I think that's why you're not seeing a lot of applications is each property has its own set of issues.
Thank you, George. I very much appreciate your insight from your experience in our town. But that, actually I said I had all, I had finished my comments, but actually I hadn't and I even written this down, but I forgot to say it. And it has to do with the required parking. I think another thing we should be looking at is whether it makes sense to be requiring one and a half spaces, parking spaces for multifamily housing that is transit oriented. And nothing could be more transit oriented than this. You just, this part was less than a quarter of a mile from, from the center station. So I think that's something we should be thinking about. And I wonder, I hope it, it might help with, with this kind of development.
Natasha.
So I have a couple of questions. What, what is piggybacking on what Jean said? Can you remind me again how many affordable housing units you're proposing for this?
So again, because this is just more of a concept that we're putting out there, we don't have a set number, but the overlay, I believe, requires 10%. Internally, we've discussed and, you know, we recognize that, that if that there, in order to get the relief we, we would want from the side yard setback, that maybe that number has to go up to 12% or something like that. Because obviously if, if you're really, you're giving relief on a particular zoning item from a planning perspective, there should be justification for that. And sometimes it's a trade off of if you're getting something that achieves a planning goal, it may make sense to provide relief with respect to a zoning constraint.
Right. So in general, so but how many units are you proposing right now?
So it's 24.
So you're talking about two to three max.
Right.
And then, so that's my first question. My second question is, I, I have a question about the curb cut that you're mentioning. It's, did you say you're creating a new curb cut and you're deleting the old curb cut?
Yeah, let me, let me pull up, let me share my screen again and just pull up the.
Thank you, George.
I'm not sure if this will show it exactly. But it, maybe this one shows it. Yeah. Now neither of them really show it very well. But right now there's a, this is, this is basically a garage back here.
Correct.
With a curb cut, there's a curb, an existing curb cut here in a driveway that comes all the way down the side.
Correct.
And, and under our design, we've shifted the curb cut over to this side, which probably, you know, from a, from a general transportation, traffic perspective, given that we've got pickering here, probably want to shift it away from pickering rather than having it, you know, right close to that, to that intersection, even though it's not a four way intersection, you still probably want to get it further away for better lines of sight and better separation between the, the streets or between the street and the curb cut.
And, and then my third question is that, that the church adjacent to the property seems to be over the property line. Is that an easement?
So, yeah, I'm not sure, you know, that may be depending upon what you're looking at that shows that.
It's, it's your site plan.
Yeah. So, so you, you know, I don't know that you can really rely on that for, for any real high degree. The, you know, you're like, this is from the assessor's map and it shows it really close. And I would probably put a decent amount of reliance on this, but not complete, because if they're, they're not always the most accurate. And I don't know that the site plan necessarily picked up an a- actual location in the field. I think they just added on as a, like a picture.
This shows that there is some distance here. But the site plan that you have has it clo- a lot closer. It has it. So let me, can I share my screen a second? So the site plan has a building basically on top of the property line.
All right. I see, I see. I don't, I don't know that.
If I can, I, I'm sorry, this is Nick Landry, the architect. I, I think, I think we, we, we got, we did get this plan off the internet. It's not an actual survey. I know that the, the lot width is correct, so that, that could just be an oversight and where that building is situated. The church building, I, I think you're right. I think it is supposed to be set over a little bit more.
Yeah. And it looks like it's very close to this building. I guess I, I'm looking at this with respect to the fact that the building, there's only 10 feet shown here and 20 feet is incredibly close to this, to this building and to, to the property. So just when, when you're talking about, you know, the, the residential setbacks and the implications of it, I think it's pretty important to show, you know, where the, where the adjacent buildings are. Because it makes a huge difference, I think. Then yes, so I was looking here that, that the curb cut was, was moved over here. I think I, I have the same, similar concerns to Jean of and I think that Adam mentioned also is, is such traffic moving in and out, straight out of the building. If there was a way of, of doing something in the rear of the building and, and, and not necessarily creating another curb cut, I think that would be advantageous to this particular site, just because if we're trying to have people walk across, as it is, the small one feels you know, alarming when you're walking by it. So it, it's just something that, you know, to take into consideration.
Doing that could also create a bit more green space around that side of it. If you have the access, if you have the site access, vehicular access coming from the south, you'd then be able to preserve a bit more, create a bit more green space or open space. And in fact, in terms of any residential units that were on the first floor, that also might be attractive from a market point of view. In other words, you know, on a ground floor, you know, ground floor unit that's set far back from the street that gives you access to the street, it still provides security, the look of the thing might be a bit more palatable.
So, so, you know, I think I mentioned this at the last discussion that we, that one of the things we looked at early on was trying to do something in the back. Because it's sort of a natural thought of there's a parking lot back there, which is a commercial parking lot, why not pull access off of that? And, and as I think I mentioned, you know, that tailpiece that I showed, when I put up the, the piece, I showed you how it's center business district. That tailpiece is owned by 60 Denham Avenue. So we have, we'd have to work an arrangement with them. But, you know, that would be, that presents an obstacle, presents a challenge. But presumably maybe, you know, a private party, we could come to some terms. But on top of that, then the rest of the parking lot is owned by the town, which means we have to come to terms with the town and that would then have to go before town meeting, because it would be a grant of an interest in real estate would require the approval of town meeting. So, you know, we looked at that and it seemed to us that that was a pretty steep hurdle. Because we're now having to essentially get lots and lots of people on board to go down that road. And on top of that, it would require probably some reconfiguration of that parking lot, which would mean all the parties involved in that parking lot, which I believe it's the town, 60 Denham Avenue and the two churches would all have to agree as well. So not to say it's impossible, but it definitely presents a unique level of challenge to try and do something back there.
It, that's true. And, and yet you may also have to go to town meeting anyways for a, you know, for, for a zoning adjustment. You know, if we're going to amend the zoning bylaw, you're going to have to go there anyways. So I think, you know, being upfront about what the purpose of the zoning change is, you know, and also describing how that can create a safer environment. You know, maybe a little easier. Marty, do you have any comments or questions?
Well, I do. Let me preface this, George, by saying, come April, I'm not going to be in the board anymore. So whatever you bring to the board, probably I'm not going to be part of this, but let me just give you some reactions for whatever it's worth here. Much of which, maybe all of which is repetitive or what other people have said. I too think that having the driveway, a curb cut from Great Plains across the sidewalk down to underground parking could work, but it's problematic. I think it's if you could access it, your underground parking from the rear, either via directly from one of those parking lots or from a new new driveway from Great Plains along the side, not going down. I think either one of those would be better than what we're seeing now. And I get it that trying to get access from the rear is going to implicate a lot of complications for you. There's no question that that's true. I, I view this site as it's an anomaly to be zoned, single residence. I agree. But I also think it's, it is a transitional lot. You, you say it yourself, it's a transitional lot. And I think it sort of needs to be viewed a little differently than both residents and the commercial block that's next door. And because of that, I think it needs to be set back from the street line. It shouldn't have a zero lot line. Not that it has to have a 50 foot setback, but it needs to have something more than zero. And I think there needs to be a lot more greenery. I, I read a lot of the neighbors' letters that that's important, at least on the Great Plains side. I like the, the, the thought process about maybe reducing the parking requirement here from one and a half to per unit to down to one per unit. After all, one of the things you're trying to do here is attract a walking crowd, people who can walk to the train station. And shouldn't need their cars as much, hopefully. And Jean asked about, what about a standalone multifamily building? Do you really need the commercial or retail space on the ground floor? And Mr. Durenzo said that he needs the ground floor commercial to make it work economically. I'm not here to contest that, but I do wonder, does he, does he, does he really need all three commercial retail or retail spaces on the ground floor to make it work economically? I don't know. I mean, I haven't seen your numbers and I suspect you're not going to show them to us. But I, I, I'm not sure I'm quite willing to accept that it doesn't work economically as a standalone residential building. So those are my, those are my comments for what they're worth.
Do, Jean, go ahead.
Marty reminded me of something else. I agree with him very much about the setback, not using the zero setback. Even though that's the standard required setback under the, under this district. And to be able to go back more feet actually requires, you know, as part of, I'm sure you'll be seeking a special permit, you know, with all, for all kinds of reasons. But the planning board grants a special permit to allow a setback that's farther if, if the front is going to have a patio or some feature like that. And I think for a couple of reasons. Because of the idea of it being a transition between the church property, which the churches are setback and they have greenery from that to the commercial block. Also, people are used to there being a beautiful greenery in the front there with, of course, the, the former use, but more importantly, for safety. As cars are coming out of that driveway, to have the visibility to take that turn, they're taking a left turn particularly. If, if the building was set back 10 feet or so with some grass strip, something like that, just, just enough to give you the visibility, to give you something green in front. I don't think it would be disharmonious with the commercial block next to it to have that kind of setback.
One last question that I had is in the, in one of the diagrams that you have that laid out the number of units. There were three commercial units on the first floor. The total, I think around 8100 square feet. And then in the back, there were two spots. G1, I think, and G2.
Residential.
That's. Just wanted to confirm that. Thanks, Marty. That question was for Marty, by the way. Lee, do you have any comments or questions?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Nick, I'm going to ask you if you have any comments or questions.
No, thank you.
Is there, and then Jay, is this, does this give you a bit more specific direction about what we're thinking? Do you have any comments or questions?
I would like to have another working meeting with members of the planning board. Most definitely. I mean, I think we got to go back to our original, original design we talked about.
Okay.
That does give a driveway inside it. I mean, getting setback, I think that's easily obtainable, the setback in front of the building. Yeah, I'd love to have another working meeting with the board.
The board will be open, will be open to that.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
And finally, George, do you have any other comments or questions?
No, I think we've covered it on this, but, but when we're done, I have a comment on your prior hearing. More for Marty's benefit than anything else.
I think we're done and for Marty's benefit, I'll allow it now.
So Marty, Marty, I, I was involved with, I represented Al Graymont when that, when the parking lot was done back there. And my recollection is with respect to those easements that I, I don't know if it was Tony Delgasso, but I, my recollection is that might've been him that came up with the idea of selling the whole concept to the adjacent property owners by saying, if they granted the town a, an easement for 100% use and control over the parking that they were giving to the, that the town would be able to use, they would, they would absolve themselves of liability because they didn't have any right to control it or maintain it. And it put it all on the town. And so I know that was a factor in Mr. Graymont's consideration when he swapped off with the town and, and if, I don't know if you remember, but he swapped off and then he ended up getting a piece of land that he built the building on. That became part of the Jacobs block. They also did away with, there used to be a road. And that little piece where you see the, like, there's a little curve behind where Hearth is, that was an actual road that came in and curved through there. If you look in the old assessors maps, you'll, you'll see it, the old plans, you'll see that. So it was part of the town actually got rid of and abandoned the roadway and extinguished the rights of the property owners in the road. So it was all done, you know, by agreement and everybody was willing to give up their rights in order to make this larger project work for everybody's benefit. The easements, from my recollection is the easement, it was kind of a cross easement that the town got the easement to maintain it and use it. And then the, the property owners got the right to use certain other spaces, or maybe that was a bit of horse trading, depending upon the property owner, I don't know.
You don't have, happen to have a copy of the document, do you?
Probably buried in a file somewhere from, because that was back in 2001, 2000, 2001. So somewhere, somewhere I've got a hard paper copy, but unfortunately my digital copy got lost when I had a computer meltdown in 2003.
The documents all went on record, Marty. We have them.
Yeah, okay. They're all the registry.
They're all on record. So we have them.
2001, huh? I thought it would have been old doing that. Okay.
Thank you very much, Jay, Nick and George. We're grateful for you coming in and being open to our comments. We look forward to welcoming you again at another meeting in the near future.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you. I, I think it's time to probably bring our chair back to continue with our main meeting. Should we send him a text? Or Alex, were you able to bring him over? We'll send him a text.
He's one of the participants. No, he's here.
Oh, look at that. Mr. Chair, the gavel is yours.
You're muted, Paul.
Thank you. It's nice to be back. So where are we? We are at 9:17. I think we're actually going to finish up at a reasonable hour tonight. The next thing on our agenda is minutes. We have minutes of one meeting in our package from September 21, 2021. It looks like we've, it's already been commented on and redlined by Jean. Do we have any other?
There were minutes of November 8th, 2021 also in our packets.
I think that was the executive session.
You know, we've got, it's all about, no, I think those are separate minutes. There's two separate minutes.
Two separate minutes?
One was of the executive session and the other was of the portion of the meeting that was not. Because at the end of the minutes I'm looking at for November 8, 2021, it says the planning board adjourned. Well, wait a minute.
I think there were just one.
That at the end of the, the open meeting, the motion was made to go into executive session.
No, I've got them, Jean. I see.
Okay.
No, wait, 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 wait a minute. No, November 8th is just the executive session minutes.
Well, if others haven't had an opportunity to review them, we can wait on approving them, but.
The, the, the November 8th meeting minutes that were not the executive session, you've all already approved.
Right. This is for, we have September 21 minutes that have been redlined that are part of our packets.
Right.
Okay. Oh, maybe the, yeah, I'm sorry. Maybe the other redlined November 8th minutes were emailed separately and were not part of our package.
Correct. Right. Originally, right. What was?
Okay. All right. Yeah. So I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes of the September 21, 2021 Needham Planning Board meeting.
Second.
As changed, as redlined and presented.
As, as redlined.
Any discussion? Hearing none will take a vote. People got moved around, so I'll go in the way I can see people is a spot.
Hi.
Mr. Jacobs.
Hi.
Mr. Block.
Hi.
Ms. McKnight.
Hi.
The chair votes aye. Those minutes have been accepted.
This feels like the Brady Bunch.
Report from Planning Director.
I just want to remind everybody, there is some upcoming meetings. Maybe Jean or Natasha want to speak a little bit more about, we have a, a meeting of the housing working group scheduled for January 27th. Where we're proposing to do a community wide meeting. It's going to be an educational meeting on demographics and information on the status of, of housing and affordable housing in Needham. And Jean has agreed to do historical overview of the zoning history of needing Needham and how that's, you know, impacted the afford, the housing patterns that Needham currently sees. And then an opportunity for people in the community to comment on, give us ideas on what they see as the current problems and what they see as solutions. And we've reached out to town meeting members. We've reached out to members of boards and committees. We've reached out to members of a number of different groups, the League of Women Voters and some, there were some other entities I think Jean and Natasha could speak to. So that, that workshop is planned for the 27th and I would encourage, I guess, the entire planning board to participate in that. I don't know, Jean and Natasha, if you want to say anything more about that, that, that meeting.
And I'll let Jean talk more about it in general, but I think we would encourage also community members who are here listening to also attend. And it's really a listening session. It's at the beginning of the process. We want to get community input at the beginning of the process. And in general, I think that Jean has a lot of really interesting history that I didn't even know about. So I want to hear all about it. And just kind of say where we are, just the, the, as a kind of the repository of information that we have and, and to make sure that everyone has a voice. And Jean, I'm sure that you have.
What I'll add is that the housing plan working group first focused on the idea of sending out a survey using the town's resources for public participation. And then when we looked at the draft survey, which various members of the housing plan working group had some input, it just seemed way too complicated and way too early in the process to be sending out a survey like that. We felt that people really would benefit from a public education process first. So that's our focus for this upcoming community session. And we are going to have, have a listening session as well, so that people can respond to what's presented to them right there at the latter half of the meeting. But then that will lead to, you know, there'll be really three other opportunities for public participation in the process. One will be a community survey. And there will also will be a presentation of housing, of housing, housing needs. And finally, a presentation of the draft housing plan, all for public comment.
Right. Jean and Natasha, I have access to MLS. Do you want any market statistics and data going back five or eight years or 10 years on number of condos, number of single family homes, median price? As a slide that can, you know, show demographic changes in a graph trend? Is that any of that information of interest?
Let me, let me respond by saying that Karen Sooner-Borg has put together a lot of information along those lines. And what I suggest, and I think would be very helpful, is if you communicate directly with Karen, us, you know, community housing specialist with the data that you could offer, she may very well find it helpful. Do you agree at least that that's the way to go with that?
Yes, I think so. She's basically put together a lot of that demographic data. And certainly I can share with you the data that she has put together so far that forms her portion of the presentation. But certainly if, if there's information that, you know, that you have, that wasn't really part of her presentation, that would be helpful. It would be nice to coordinate that. So I can put you in touch with Karen. And I can also share with you where, you know, where her presentation and the data that she's collected stands so far.
Okay. If you send me your contact info and what you have, I'd be happy to review it and see what I can add to it to help the process and to reach out directly to Karen and see if there's anything that I can contribute, happy to, to do that.
And have we sent out the flyer and announcement to our planning board members?
Um, the planning board members, I think, should have probably gotten it. If, it went out, as, as I understand from Cindy, to all members, well, it went out to the all town meeting members, which would have been off of Teddy's list. And it will go out to all, to all board members as well.
Well, just as a quick, as a quickie, it will be easy enough to send it out, make sure that each of the planning board members has it. And I think you, I think you should feel free to forward it to any community organizations that you are involved with. I have a list of those that I've been sending to and that Cindy has sent to. But I don't think there's any exclusivity about it. For example, I've sent to both the Democratic and the Republican Town Committees. As well as Equal Justice Needham, League of Women Voters. Needham Diversity Initiative, At Your Neighbor's Table, which is a consortium of, I think religious groups in town that have.
You could also.
We're reaching out to the community as much as we can.
You can also post, you know, on the Needham Facebook site, official and unofficial. And when I ran the Heights Association, we also used, I think, Nextdoor, which was, I think, a useful social media platform as well.
And Adam, you're reminding me of the Needham Heights Neighborhood Association. That would be an organization to reach out to.
Right. We'll chat, happy to chat with that offline for sure.
And Cindy is part of our group. So in general, you know, she's, does the communication for the town. So we're hoping that we can get, we can get it out there to as many people as possible. But again, I think it'll be kind of an education piece in the sense of what do we have to date? But it's also half of the meeting is Q and A and, and, you know, comments and questions from, from the community. And I think that, that is really valuable to hear this before we begin any of our work and sending out surveys and anything else.
Smart.
Okay. Well, then the next thing I have is just a reminder to Adam and Paul that our meeting with the finance committee is coming up. So it's on your, it's on your radar. I think it's, I thought it was for the first of February, but I think I've got the wrong date.
Well, February 1st is our planning board meeting.
Right. I know that. That's what, that can't be right.
I've got it on Wednesday, February 2nd.
Okay, then that's the dates. Yes, it's in the evening. I did have a meeting with the finance committee because they're looking at, at zero based budgeting last week that I think went pretty well. And so we'll see what they have to say about our, our draft budget, but I haven't heard any, anything negative about what, what we proposed. So that's scheduled for that Wednesday date. And then lastly, I wanted to talk to you about, I sent an email out today. Alex and I have been working with the Latino restaurant because they're interested in, you know, retaining the outdoor seating that they had installed during COVID. And the issue that they're facing is that that seating is actually. Um, and the issue, um, that they're facing is that that seating is actually located on a right-of-way, which services the building that they're in, as well as services the, um, multifamily dwelling that's, that's located next door. Um, and they have been unable to, you know, get a license agreement between the parties, um, to allow them to keep the seating near, a formal license agreement to allow them to keep the seating there. Um, you know, on a, on a more permanent basis. Um, but they have been able to get a letter, um, from the, um, property owner next door, um, acknowledging the use and supporting the use and indicating that he has no problem with its continuation. Um, and so my question to you is, and I'm hopeful that we can actually make this work, because I think it's a good use of the land, um, of accepting that, um, as opposed to a formalized license agreement and recognizing that to enable this, this outdoor seating to remain in place after the April one deadline, when the COVID protections are going to disappear.
So they.
I can share, if, if it's helpful for you, I can share my screen and show you where the easement is, but I, uh, unless you just understand conceptually what we're talking about.
Well, I, you know.
Show the letter.
I looked at it very briefly. I mean, I didn't get it until what you said, sort of like five thirty tonight. And I got traffic from Boston to home was horrendous. There was an accident on the Mass Pike. So I really didn't have a chance to, to focus in on this.
Right.
Saying that the COVID, COVID allows them to keep do- doing it until April first anyway?
Yes, COVID basically, this is, COVID is basically letting them stay there till April. But all these restaurants, which is the reason you heard her come in tonight, are interested in making these, these arrangements permanent and allowing themselves to continue them. And so Latina, basically, Latina basically is in the, is, is in the same situation. So I can, um, if you want.
So I'm confused about, I'm confused about who actually owns this land and whether it is subject to a special permit at the present time.
Yes. So whoever sharing their screen could eliminate that. I can show you the easement plan. Okay. So can, can everybody see that? So essentially, um, um, here's basically, can you see my cursor on here?
Yep.
Okay, so here basically is, is, is the, is, is basically where Latino is located. And this basically is, you know, the building that's the, um, the, the, uh, commercial space with the residential units above it. And there's a basically a right-of-way that comes in here. Um, and.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. When, when you say a right-of-way, are you saying that that is a public road?
No, I'm saying it's a private right-of-way. I'm saying that this is the property line here.
Okay.
And that this person owns, owns, owns this, owns there to that point. The person that owns this building owns this section, and there's a right-of-way easement that they both have over it that enables them to access the property in the back. Um, in addition to that, the residential building, commercial space, um, has the driveway that comes in under their building, um, that allows the access to the rear of, to the rear of their property. So the seating has been placed here in this area, um, of this, um, this, this area. Um, and that's where, um, Latina would like to retain the seating. And so we have a letter from the property owner on this side indicating that he's okay with that arrangement. Um, and that they can continue to basically access their dumpsters in the back by coming through, through this, through this area. Um, and so the question is whether or not, um, when I initially talked to Jean about this, we thought, well, the way to solve this would be through some kind of formalized license arrangement between the parties and the Latino would apply. But it seems like it's going to be very difficult to get that done. Um, but we do have this letter, uh, from Mr. Fuhrman, I think, who owns this property next door, indicating that he's supportive of the arrangement. It hasn't been a problem. Um, and so the question is, is the board going to find that to be sufficient to allow Latina to file, to put their seating, um, to, to basically formalize the seating that they've placed outside?
Well, can I make a comment on this? Um, whether that's going to be sufficient to receive a filing. I think just, think we have to recognize that whatever we, if we accept it and we approve it, it's all subject to Mr. Foreman and Brookline Development Corp, LLC, saying, I want it to end. And then it ends.
Right.
There's nothing we can do about that. So functionally, it is a license. This letter, in my mind, pretty much amounts to a license. Because a license, as you know, we've talked about this in the past, it's only as good as long as the, uh, licensor, the one granting it, wants it to be. Once he says it's over, it's over.
Yeah, he had conditions in that letter. He had conditions on certain existing conditions continuing to exist. Like, for example, he was saying that deliveries to, I guess, his tenants on Great Plain Avenue would continue from Great Plain Avenue without interruption. And I don't know, I don't even know how this board feels about those.
That's.
Great Plain Avenue being okay instead of coming in from the rear.
They've been do, they've been doing that for the last, I think, year or so, Paul.
Yeah.
And I, and that's been actually a benefit to everyone. And is actually, uh, when deliveries were coming through, the alleyway was actually causing damage to the buildings. So this, this, this is really, it seems to be a positive solution for both property owners.
But I get to the legal questions, which Marty and I have been, you know, all, all night Marty and I have been focusing in on the technicalities of the legal issues. Are there special permits on these two parcels that need to be amended or modified in order to allow this use? And I, I'm sure that there are. I'm sure that we have a special permit on Latino.
That, and Latina is the one that would come in front of you. Latino would come in front of you, just like Perth came in front of you. And they would ask for permission to keep that seating as they currently have it arranged. And they would ask to have their special permit amended to allow this to happen. And their special permit does mandate that the deliveries, um, be off of the, you know, from the back off of Dedham Avenue. Um, and so we would need to allow them to accept deliveries, um, off of Great Plain Avenue. But that would be part of the application that they would file. What's been the impediment is, is, is the, the issue of where this is located and the agreement between the parties to allow it to go forward. And so now it looks like the, the butter has agreed to allow it to go forward. So, um, I'm hopeful that, you know, you'd find that letter, I think, as Marty, I think, just basically described it, to be the equivalent of a license agreement. Um, and that you will, you would allow us to, basically to amend the special permit to, to enable this to happen. Of course, if, if at some point in time the parties don't enable it, well, then it goes away.
So, let me understand something about. Is parcel B fifty Dedham Avenue? Is that the address for Foreman?
Yes.
Yes.
Do we have a special permit on fifty Dedham Avenue? That, that currently requires that deliveries be made off of Dedham Avenue and not off of Great Plain Avenue?
Uh, if I could have answered that, um, you know, the driveway that goes under the building, if there were any such requirement upon Dedham, uh, fifty Dedham Avenue, they could use that driveway under their own building to access the rear. I think it's the deliveries to the restaurant that are more of an issue.
Making the point.
Yeah.
That by allowing this without amending the special permit for fifty Dedham Avenue may cause them to be in technical violation of the special permit. Do they need to come to us with a modification to the fifty Dedham Avenue special permit? I don't know the answer to that. I don't remember what the wording is.
So let's, so let's look into that. And in the meantime, answer the question, which I, which I think Marty framed it well, that.
Well, the answer is, yeah, because the answer is very simple. Yeah, they can have our permission, but our permission terminates if they don't have the permission from the licensor.
Of course.
And I agree. Sorry, go ahead, Jean.
Um, I think, I think the issue is that, and, uh, I'm, I'm all in favor of just going ahead with this letter that is evidence that the owner of fifty Devon Avenue has granted at least an oral license to use this to, um, the restaurant. But usually, we would want to see the license. We want it to be written and would want to see that there's a notice provision. And they have sixty days to cure, ninety days to terminate, or things like that. And we're not, we're just not going to require that in this case. Um, that, you know, the select, when it comes to the condition that they, uh, the restaurant have their deliveries from Great Plain Avenue, you know, the board of, the select board has been very supportive of outdoor dining. And I real, and it's the public way, if the select board doesn't have a problem with deliveries coming in from Great Plain Avenue to the restaurant, you know, I, I just don't think it's, it's anything we would make an issue of.
And I, I just think in general, we've seen two of these, um, different but similar situations of extensions of outdoor dining. And I'm very supportive of outdoor dining, but I'm, I'm not an attorney, unlike some of you. And I think that each one of them has a history that I'm not familiar with. I think that we need town council to look at these to make sure that we're doing it properly. Um, so that would be my recommendation.
That's a good point, Natasha. I'm fully supportive of that.
And they're going to continue to appear because they've been very successful and, and it's very exciting for the town. But it's also because things are changing so much. I think they're, they all have like small differences and, and we need to be prepared to, to deal with them independently.
Well, let me respond to that. I think, um, having us vote to seek an opinion of town council would be, would be perceived, I'm afraid, as, um, trying to make things difficult.
I, I.
Put that out. Yeah.
I agree with Jean. I think.
Why would that be? I mean, if we support it, but we want to make sure that all the paperwork is in right order so that they don't, so that everything is approved. Why would that be?
Um, well, I think what Paul said, and that is, we would have to recognize that the owner of fifty Dedham Avenue, who has given evidence by this letter that he has granted at least an oral license to use the driveway to, to, to the restaurant for the dining, could take that permission away at any time. And as long as we recognize that in the granting of our permit, uh, I don't understand why, uh, we, why, what would you be asking town council?
So this is temporary, basically. So at any point, it could be taken away from them.
That's the nature of license.
But I, but I, you know, but I think for that, for that particular restaurant, you know, they've really been relying on this outdoor dining, um, to maintain, you know, to maintain their, their business. And, you know, that, that, uh, benefit of having that outdoor, outdoor dining, if we don't grant them permits, is going to disappear for them in April. Um, and I don't, and I think we want to be supportive of these restaurants and, um, make sure that they continue to function.
Yeah. So actually, maybe, I'm beginning to see the light on that. We don't have to go to town council because we can, we can amend their special permit, which basically says, we're giving you permission to do it. We recognize the fact that you also need the permission of, um,
Fifty.
Fifty, Dedham Avenue. And, uh, you know, it's just kind of a finding of fact that this, that, that, that their ability to do this, uh, you know, uh, you know, it's, it's a finding that our granting permission doesn't negate their needing the permission of fifty Dedham Avenue to continue this.
Right.
And you, you know, we're, we're not, we're not taking away anything from fifty, we're, we're not taking away any rights from fifty Dedham Avenue.
So what about?
By our granting permission.
But what about your point that doesn't fifty Dedham need to come before us and amend their special permit?
Lee has to, Lee has to look at their special permit to see if there's something there that they have to come to amend.
In the meanwhile, this is less of a fifty Dedham, because I think the issue between the parties was the restaurant deliveries.
Yes.
Were, were, instead of going through the alleyway, we're actually going through the driveway under fifty Dedham Avenue. So by doing this, it effectively cures that problem. And that's why the, that's why fifty Dedham Avenue is supporting this arrangement. However, whatever period of, for whatever period of time, Latina understands and accepts that, that it's, you know, it's revocable at any time, but it's, uh, it's a benefit to the both parties effectively.
Yeah, we just have to word, we just have to word it properly to make it clear that they can't go to fifty Dedham Avenue and say, we've got permission from the planning board, so, you know.
Right.
You can't kick us out.
So going forward.
I don't, I don't want to word it in, in a way that there is any possibility of our causing that kind of a rift between the two of them. I, 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 I want our language to be clear that, you know, we're not taking any rights away from, from the owner of fifty Dedham Avenue as to the rights that they have. It's, but you know, it, it sounds like, it sounds like all of the outdoor dining is on, is on the property that is owned by the landlord to Latino, to Latino.
Now, that's not, that's not, no, that's not true.
No, it's not. I go by there all the time. It's not true.
No, the, the, the outdoor dining is, is, and because what's happening is basically the outdoor, this is like a wall here. And so the outdoor dining is between this point and that building. And.
Yes.
So it, so it covers the entire right-of-way, which means that, which means that they are, they are putting their seating on fifty Dedham Avenue's property. So we do, so we do need to amend the special permit from fifty Dedham Avenue to allow this seating to be there.
I think so.
I, I think if, I think if we go down that path, I think this whole thing's going to fall apart.
Well, you know something, Lee, that's not our problem. We have to, we have to, uh, adhere to our bylaws and adhere to our rules. And if, if we have a special permit on fifty Dedham Avenue and it requires our permission to have outdoor seating on fifty Dedham Avenue, then, then we need to, you know, grant our permission to fifty Dedham Avenue.
Let's go back a bit. Let's go back a bit. When this thing first hit almost two years ago, one of the first things we talked about was adopting a policy of non-enforcement when it came to, I, I think, various possible special permit violations. Um, do you remember that, Lee?
Yes, and that's how this, that's how this got implemented. And it was permitted to, you know, through this, through the town manager's office. These were all reviewed and they were approved. And then the fire department, the police department reviewed, reviewed the drawings along with the building.
We were trying to make this happen quickly, um, so that people could do all kinds of, you know, new outdoor dining possibilities. And this was the way we thought of to, uh, to make that happen. And I, I'm pretty sure we formally adopted that policy. Uh, I think maybe we, can you maybe try to dig that out, Lee, and we could review the, the wording of it? Because I.
But that was, that policy was only effective during the time of the, of the, you know, of the governor's order. And which is why I'm saying that that flexibility is going to all disappear on April the first.
Well, why does it need to, though? Why can't we reinstate it even beyond and outside the governor's authority? Why can't we just say for the time being or some date, some dated period that we state, we adopt a policy of non-enforcement of.
Marty, what we did adopt was a zoning change last October that allowed us to grant permission under that zoning to have outdoor dining in our special permits.
That's right. And that was to replace the, uh, emergency provision of non-enforcement.
So let's adhere to what we've asked town meeting to approve, and they approved. Well, we're going to say, well, in spite of going to town meeting and having them. and then having them approve this wording, we're just not going to enforce a violation of what we asked town meeting to approve.
Well, all right, let's proceed that way. Uh, then the only question to me is this. I think the reason that Lee said this will all fall apart if you require fifty Dedham to come before us is because they're not going to want to spend the time or money to do it, which I totally understand.
Well, Latina spent the, the time and money to do it for them.
Or could we raise the issue on our own?
Let's, I want to suggest that we take a look at the special permit um that was granted to fifty Dedham Avenue. Uh, it may be that the owner of fifty Dedham Avenue would be pleased to see an amendment because it may be that the current um permit requires that area to be left open for deliveries. So if there's a, a general deal that, no, they're not going to do deliveries anymore. We don't need to keep that area open for deliveries. That may be actually something that fifty Dedham Avenue was happy with.
And actually, I'm seeing this as a minor modification.
Hmm, without a hearing or.
Yeah.
Well, no, I think, I think the issue, Paul, is that his, oh, you mean for Dedham Avenue, for fifty Dedham?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Because all we're doing on fifty Dedham Avenue is just allowing them to have outdoor seating tables in a, in an area that they control, in a, in an area that they own.
Well, yeah, we're, we're allowing Latina to put outdoor dining on top of their property.
Or whatever. We're, we're allowing. To allow somebody else to put outdoor seating there.
Well, which is, again, can we raise this on our own and invite Brookline Development to come in uh to discuss formalizing the arrangement that's been going on for a year or two already?
Well, I think people have been reaching out, you know, I know Mary Ann Cooley's been involved and I think Mo has been involved, you know, to try to, and it's been difficult, you know, to get to this point. And that's why I'm trying to find a solution that, you know, is, is, you know, that recognizes, I think, if, if it's possible, that recognizes that letter and just allows us to deal really with Latina's permit um and doesn't pull the other property in, into a formalized amendment. Um, because I'm concerned that it's been difficult to get to this point and, and it's fragile and um the whole thing could fall apart.
Yeah, that's my understanding also.
It sounds like the relationship of the parties is fragile.
Well, actually, Adam, now that I'm thinking about it, um, we, we've, we've had um the owner of fifty Dedham Avenue in front of us before. Um, from what I've seen before, this is not surprising to me from his personality. From his business, you know, that this is, this is not, let's just put it that way.
So having said that, this might be an easiest solution. We have to go through the special permit with Latina. They're looking for outdoor dining. They'll make an application to us. We have evidence of uh, of uh permission granted by fifty uh by fifty Dedham. Uh, that's the extent to which they're prepared to do it. It's unusual.
And we're just recognizing that fifty Dedham, the owner of fifty Dedham can, can pull the plug at any time.
Right. And that's, that's how they're proposing to have us proceed. That's how Latina is proposing to have us proceed. Okay, so do we have agreement on that strategy?
It's not clean.
No, it's, it's not, it's not clean, but you know, it's a restaurant that really needs this um capacity.
If I may be so bold, it's not our job to solve the business problems of the business owners in town. It's our job to enforce the zoning bylaws and to issue permits based upon our zoning bylaws. I know that we're trying to be pro-business. And when I first moved to town almost forty years ago, this town had a reputation of not being pro-business and a reputation of being very difficult for business. And I'm very proud of the fact that this planning board and other boards that I've had experience with ha- has that reputation been, been changed? But, you know, if Latina's got a problem with the owner of fifty Dedham Avenue, it's, it's, it's not our job to solve that problem.
Paul, Mr. Chad, I do think that we are in a kind of a strange situation of the condition of why they need outdoor dining, which is something that is not typical because of the pandemic. So I think that um I am, I, I agree with what you're saying, but at the same time, I think, I think we have to be sensitive to all these businesses really trying to survive through these difficult times. So I just want to be mindful of that as well.
I don't, I, I guess I'm wondering if we don't do something with regard to the fifty Dedham special permit. I don't think we're waiving our right to do something later. I think there's specific language in this special permit that pretty much says as much. So maybe we're not losing much, if anything, by not insisting that they come before us. Even though it's clearly not the cleanest way to do it.
I'm just pointing out and, you know, and it's Lee's job to read the special permit and see what's there for fifty Dedham Avenue. I'm just pointing out that having these, these um um tables and chairs on that right of way that is owned by fifty Dedham Avenue.
Half of it's owned by fifty Dedham.
I'm talking about the portion that is owned by fifty Dedham Avenue.
Okay.
Could very easily, from, you know, the way I know we word our decisions and probably does, put them in violation of their special permit. That's all. And all I'm suggesting is we do them the favor of cleaning up the language of their special permit. If it's necessary, we have to read the special permit to see if it's necessary, giving them the authority to allow these tables and chairs to be on their property be, because we've got the ability to say yay or nay for that, I think. I'm not saying that we do what this, and, 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 and I don't remember the wording of the special permit. And I'm just saying, look, Mr., I forget his name, owner of fifty Dedham Avenue. Um, y- y- you know, we're trying to do you a favor of not having you in violation of your special permit by your allowing Latina to have, to have these tables and chairs there after April first. We just want to clean up your special permit so that you're not in violation.
Well, I can review it um and report back to you.
I don't think. Part, the other part is, can we do so without requiring his presence or even a hearing?
Well, he'd have to submit an application to.
No.
Make a change, you know?
Would have to sign an application.
He'd have to sign an application, amend his special permit to do what Paul says.
Yeah, which could be submitted on his behalf by the owner of Latina. No, he doesn't have to appear. We have a lot of applications where the applicant doesn't appear.
I think we have a unique set of circumstances here. I think you're all correct on the technicality. I think it sounds like we have a path forward here that Lee's going to take a look at Latina's special permit and maybe that of fifty Dedham.
Yeah.
But I think that we're going to be sensitive to the needs here. We do recognize already that we've been, that Latina has been granted permission to make use of fifty Dedham Avenue's um uh extent of the right of way, of their own right of way. That's the critical component. It's, Latina accepts that risk is, it's irrevocable, it's revocable at any time. And we uh um have to respond in unique times, in unique ways to unique, unique solutions.
Let's go back. Let, let's go back a step.
Forward.
Somebody, somebody gets mad at the owner of fifty Dedham Avenue. Okay, and they recognize the fact that there are tables and chairs on his property that are in violation of a special permit. They don't come to us. They go to Dave Roach. And they say to Dave Roach, you're supposed to be enforcing the, the, you're supposed to be enforcing these uh bylaw special permits. So why don't you, you know, and these tables and chairs are in violation of his, of his special permit? Why, why, why don't you force him to remove those tables and chairs? Which of course is to the detriment of Latina, not to him. But you know, this is, this is why I'm saying, let's dot our i's and cross our t's.
Well, uh, communication channels are open with the owner of fifty Dedham Avenue. Um, you know, there was a letter that went to um s- s- select, select board member, Mary Ann Cooley. Um, after Lee reviews the special permit, especially if we perceive that there's a minor change that could be actually to the benefit or if, you know, if of, of fifty Dedham Avenue. Um, and we can explain that it would be to, to his benefit. Um, then perhaps there could be a communication along the lines of, of, you know, would be a good idea to um, you know, it's no hard work for you. Latina can, can carry the ball.
Yeah.
But it would be helpful to you to, to make this change. Um, it depends, you know, because it depends on how it's communicated. That's, that's all.
Okay, well, I think I understand next steps. Thank you for your time.
Yeah. All right, so uh, Lee, is there anything else?
No, I have nothing else.
Um, Lee, um, in our packets were some very interesting proposed changes to the Wellesley and Westwood zoning bylaws. I don't want to take more time tonight to talk about that, but I would love to have a presentation on what they're doing in those towns. It sounds interesting.
I was, I mentioned that I was going to bring that up in the next agenda item, which is correspondence, because I was going to say that we have.
Oh, I thought, I thought you were beyond that, well.
Although, although I don't, I don't see Westwood. I've got the Wellesley, the Wellesley changes. I was just going to mention that we got this um uh no- notice of zoning, zoning public hearing from the Wellesley Planning Board for the various changes. So we're talking about correspondence. We, we, we have received from the Wellesley Planning Board a notice of zoning public hearing um for their annual town meeting uh on Monday, January twenty fourth um with some very interesting zoning, zoning changes that Wellesley is uh looking, looking to make uh including commercial gun shops, minor change to accessory, to their accessory dwelling unit provision, signs, outdoor lighting. I don't, all seeing Westwood in our packets, but maybe.
Uh, if I, you know, the, the Westwood, I think the packet got changed over time, you know, and but what I looked at uh today, it has uh a zoning bylaw amendment relative to mixed use in multi-family residential overlay district, which is something certainly of interest to us. So it's, it's impossible to just read something like this and understand what they're doing.
Well, we, we can get the detail of it. We'll, we'll get copies of it. No, and we, and we can, we, and we can reach out to the planners in both towns.
Yeah, and, and when you have the time to do that, I think would be very helpful to us. Thank you.
And we also have um correspondence from Elizabeth Caponia, who is a town meeting member from Precinct J with regard to um a, a discussion that we had um with regard to the uh medical, medical facility, medical clinic that is probably go- going to be in front of us on, on an application to amend the special permit for the for, for the um property on Highland Avenue where Panera Bread is. She has, she expresses some concerns which are in our packets and uh these are all legitimate concerns that if and when there's an application in front of us to amend the special permit, uh we should, we should look at. Make sure that those issues are addressed. That's what I've got. And if there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to which, oh, we have to go into executive session. I, we need a motion to go into executive session and to.
If I may.
You would, please?
Uh, uh, I move that the planning board enter into executive session under Massachusetts General Law, uh, chapter thirty A, section twenty-one A seven for the purpose of complying with master general law, chapter thirty-eight, uh, section twenty-two, to review and approve the minutes of the executive session held on November eight, twenty twenty-one and that the board not return to open session at the conclusion of the executive session. Did you do that extemporaneously? All right, did I, what, does that, did it sound okay? That was beautiful. I'm learning, I'm learning. I have to say, of all of you, Jean has taught me the most in how to be able to draft motions.
Can't believe that.
I'm happy to second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Um, any, any discussion? So uh for those still attendees, um, and we do have nine attendees. Um, once this motion is approved, we will be leaving this Zoom meeting and not returning. So um I will now call the roll. Mr. Jacobs?
Aye.
Mrs. Spata?
Aye.
Ms. McKnight?
Aye.
Mr. Block?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. It's unanimous. We are going into executive session. We are logging, we are leaving this Zoom and logging into our executive session, Zoom invitation.